We're going to call the June 25th meeting of Christiansburg Town Council to order. Ask that we observe a moment of reflection following the pledge of allegiance. I'm staying for the pledge and I ask councilman Showalter.
We have a pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. I don't believe we have any public hearing scheduled for tonight. Is that correct? Some of the consent agenda, we have the council meeting minutes on June 4th and June 11th. I think June 4th was the budget work session. The 11th was our normal meeting, the monthly bill. Approval of addendum to Southern Air contract with the amount of $84,935. An approval to the addendum of sunspots for SCADA for 38-6. Is that something we all know what it is?
SCADA is basically a communication system for pump stations.
Okay. Authorization for renewal of landfill professional services contract with SCS engineers in the amount of $120,000, subject to approval of fiscal year 20 budget. Approval of professional services engineering contract with A. Morton, Thomas &amp; Associates in the amount of $335,520 for design of Pepper's Ferry Road Arbor Drive intersection improvements. Approval of professional services engineering contract with Rinker Design Associates PC in the amount of $194,256 for initial design services for the connector road from Virginia Route 114, Pepper's Ferry Road to Cambria Street. We need to schedule a public hearing for July 23rd, 2019 for going approving and authorizing an execution of the small cell franchise agreement by and between the town of Christiansburg and Shenandoah Personal Communications LLC, electively Shentown. Schedule a public hearing for June, July 23rd, 2019 for a request by Cambria Storage Partners LLC to vacate approximately 120 linear feet of a 20-foot wide sanitary sewer easement on the south side of the property located at 300 and 390 Cambria Street Northwest. Tax map number 446-27-A. And schedule a public hearing on August 13th, 2019 for a conditional use permit between Shaw Development LLC for expansion of the Thomas Circle Mobile Home Park located along Badger Street Northwest and Thomas Circle Northwest. Tax map numbers 525-19899 and 525A-448 in the B3 General Business District. I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of attorney bills this month. I still have some questions regarding some of those bills. It has nothing to do with your firm, Jim, just with questions I've put out to staff that they seek advice from. I haven't got clarification on it.
One second, Madam.
I'm going to throw a fly in the ointment. Items F and G, these two contracts for professional services. The firm I work for from time to time has relationships with both companies on projects outside of our area. So I'm going to, just for appearance sake, I'm going to recommend that we vote on those separately. They're engineering firms.
Okay.
And I have the same problem on...
All right, so let's just... Looking group?
J.
On J, okay.
Uh huh.
So F, G, and J? F, G, and J, right. All right, so I amend my motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception to our attorney calls. Prefer the clarification once again. I'm going to put out there to the mayor and staff. Items A, B, C, D, E, H, I.
One second, Madam.
Okay. Clear on that?
Thank you.
I have one question. Can I ask? Could you explain some more on what that was for the synopsis for the SCADA?
SCADA is basically a wireless communication system for things like pump stations, water tanks, a let us know if access is made to the doors to pump stations, or what water levels are in water tanks, things like that. So SCADA is basically a communication system for that.
Okay. And how often do we have to do that? I mean, how often do we have to renew this?
I think that's an annual contract.
Annual?
That's an amendment to the current contract to finish out the collections system of SCADA that we started last year.
The one time, one time thing for this year. Okay. Thank y'all.
All right, Madam Clerk, a few of the council on A, B, C, D, E, H, and I, with the exception of the attorney bills.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye. That is 6-0. On F, approval of professional service engineering contract with A. Morton, Thomas &amp; Associates for design of Pepper's Ferry Road Arbor Drive intersection improvements.
You could probably not those two together.
E and F together.
All right, F and G?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items F, G, and J.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay.
You've got a different, you've got a different extension here, don't you?
Yeah. So we're going to, we're going to have J out of there.
J, that's right.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Okay, okay.
So F and G.
So I'll make a comment that we approve the consent agenda.
Sorry, I'm making it so hard.
Agenda A, B, C, D, E, even better.
Okay.
I'll still second it.
Okay. Madam Clerk, F and G.
Whoa, 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 that's wrong too.
F and G.
So I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda for F and G. Not yet.
Right, okay, that's good. Is that still second?
I guess so.
Yep. Let me rather pop you out. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
I'm staying.
That's 5-0 and 1 extension. Item J, public hearing for August 13th, conditional use permit request by Shaw for expansion of Thomas Circle Mobile Home Park. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the request or schedule a public hearing for the...
One second.
Motion in the second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
I'm staying.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Again, 5-0 and 1 extension. Introduction and presentations we have, we are introducing new public, new employees, grandchildren in public works. You've got a young man you're going to bring in?
Yes, sir. Tonight I'd like to introduce Jamie Duncan. Jamie is our new maintenance coordinator for his former division of Public Works. Jamie is from the Pile area. He currently lives in Cleveland. He graduated from Auburn. He has four children and his hobbies include hunting and farming.
Very good.
You're welcome, Sam.
Very good, welcome.
Yeah.
Brad Everly?
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Andy Mave. Andy is our new crew leader. He's housed right now at Heartbreaker Sports Complex. Andy comes with a wealth of knowledge in the recreational world. He, he worked some time at Henry County Parks and Recreation as well as Montgomery County Parks and Recreation, and most recently he was Parks and Recreation Director for Floyd County. And so we're happy to have Andy here with us in the town of Christiansburg.
Yeah, Andy, welcome, buddy.
Jamie, Andy, welcome aboard.
Yes, sir.
We'll put you through the ropes here in about two more weeks. Next is recognition of Aquatics Customer Service Coordinator, Terry. You got that one for us? Am I doing that one or are we doing that one?
Yep.
All right, you got it.
Good evening, Mayor Barber and Town Council. I'm excited this evening to, to be here in honor of one of our great town employees. This is Scott Kopecky. He's our customer service coordinator at the Aquatic Center. Scott will be here five years with the town in July, so it's exciting to have him here. Scott just recently won a great big award in the New River Valley here, so I'd like to tell you about it. Scott is our quality control customer service guy. He hires, trains, and schedules front desk employees. He also organizes birthday parties and event rentals. From the initial phone call all the way through to the final evaluation, it is Scott behind the scenes making it happen. Scott's not done there. He maintains our housekeeping division from hiring to scheduling and keeping our facility top notch. Somehow, in the midst of all of this responsibility, Scott plays the pirate for our birthday parties and outside events. And I kind of believe that that might be his favorite job.
It is.
His hats are many at the Aquatic Center, and consistently we receive outstanding reviews on our customer service surveys. He provides quality service not only to our community, but to our traveling swimming guests through the door. If you are fortunate enough to see Scott at the front desk, I can promise you, you have been properly welcomed to the Aquatic Center. Scott's dependability is outstanding, working long hours and weekends to be certain our guests are welcome to our town and satisfied with their visit so they will come back again. In fact, Scott just won for to come and be with us this evening. Scott's willingness to work with others is impeccable. Never a discouraging or negative remark. He's a wonderful team player and steps up to assist in all facility operations and events. He provides a positive friendly image to our customers, and we receive numerous outstanding comments about Scott going above and beyond for his service to our guests. Scott always puts the Aquatic Center in our town first, and we are honored to have him on our team. Congratulations, Scott, on your Employee of the Year award.
See, you want to stay on a while?
What, sir?
You want to stay on a while?
I hope so.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, that's good stuff.
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, Scott always does have a smile on his face. And I'll give you an example of how he really represented the Aquatic Center well. I think everybody knows that I did this thing for real life for life this past March. And so the day before, I told Scott, I appreciate if you can give me a little help during the day for this thing. So he said to me, what time are you going to get here? I said, I'm going to get here about 6:30 to start setting up. And so I got there at 6:30, and Scott is sitting there waiting for me, okay? And then he stayed with me, and I left around 7:30 that night. And he was there with me the whole way, and he even bought my stuff out of the car. I wasn't sure if he was just trying to get rid of me or not. I, you know, I really appreciate that you stayed with me the whole time. Thank you very much, Scott.
And Scott, I just want to, I'll just add on Steve's, which I usually do, as vice versa with Steve. But, you know, I'm real big about ownership, and you show ownership in what you do for the Aquatic Center. And I'll just repeat what Steve says, you're attentive, you're friendly, and every time I'm in there, you're busy. And that is noticed. So I do appreciate everything you do.
Yeah. And plus, I've worked with him too a lot over there, you know, with the clubs and different stuff, and kids, birthday parties and stuff. And he is a first-class man, and I respect that.
First-class, and yes, Scott, to do it, it'll get one.
That's right. And like Steve said, he's always got a smile on his face. Yeah. Thanks, buddy. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next section is our open session for citizens' comments. If you'd like to address the council, come to the podium, your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes, and address your comments to the chairman. No one? Close the citizens' comments section. We go to committee reports, and if you want to use your town, any, any council comments or committee reports, we can get them out of the way, and I'll pick up whatever's left to you.
Sounds good. I'll go first, I'm on the end. So central business has been really busy, as I, every meeting, we always say that there's new arts. So I hope everybody has seen the train art down in Cambria, and there's others set to be started. And we also have up the Eastern Continental Divide marker now. So if you go towards Route 8, where Route 8 Dunettes is, it's going to be right there. It's a blue line, there's a sign up. I think we're going to get some brochures, Andrew said, to, you know, for visitors to get a little bit more history about what that means. So that's very exciting. And then as far as recycle, I don't know if everybody has seen the article in the newspaper, but it's a year since we started our recycle program. And there's a lot of great, interesting facts. So you can look for those on the town site or in the local newspapers as well. But it's very successful so far. And that's all that I have right now.
You have a meeting tomorrow at 12?
Yeah, we do have a meeting tomorrow at 12. Thank you.
Well, Melissa, I might need your help on both these things. She had, I think the blood drive is tomorrow from 1 to 6 at the mall.
That's right.
And it's a sort of competition through different departments and...
Yeah, it's called Battle of the Badges, so you can go donate blood to the American Red Cross and do it in honor of your, of the agency you'd like to donate for, so rescue, fire, police, and it's just a fun competition for them to have bragging rights for whoever gets the most donations in their honor. And PD currently has the record from last year, so...
And one other thing, Melissa, while you're on the floor here, the farmer's market, are they going to have the dog thing show this Thursday?
Thursday.
Do you know what time they'll be actually doing the dogs?
I think the show starts at 5:30, I believe. They have to register previous to that with the farmer's market manager, that's on my, off the top of my head. But it's on our Facebook page, so you can see the full event there. But I think the show, the competition starts around that time.
And this is for the best-looking dog and the worst-looking dog, and the baddest dog?
There's no bad-looking dog, Steve.
No, no. Love fruit.
Thank you. Mr. Stone?
Nothing.
Mr. Showalter?
Nothing.
Mr. Bishop?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
I don't have anything either, sir.
Very good. Under discussion and action by mayor and council, and we have a few things. First is a proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 42 zoning of the Christiansburg Town Code for the purpose of permitting microbreweries, art galleries, studios, museums, and similar leisure enrichment uses in the B2 Central Business District and B3 General Business District, and to plan commercial developments in the B3 General Business District. The public hearing was held on June 11th, 2019.
I make a motion to approve the proposed ordinance.
One second, Madam.
Got a motion in the second, any discussions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is 6-0, thank you. The next four boundary line adjustments, and I will say that Montgomery County Board Supervisors voted last night to approve the other three. They approved the Meadows two weeks ago, so the offer had been approved by the county. First boundary line adjustment moving 125.625 acres from the unincorporated area of the county of Montgomery into incorporated town of Christiansburg. Proposed boundary adjustment area is commonly known as Meadows Golf Course and Shepherd Property. It is located on the western boundary of the town of Christiansburg adjacent to Christopher Mill Road, Norfolk and Southern Ridaway, and Norfolk and Southern Ridaway. Public hearing was held June 11th, 2019.
Can we lump B, C, and D together?
We can lump them all together.
They're all boundary line adjustments.
They're all boundary lines, council?
If council has no objection?
It would take a little bit more time.
Yes, sir.
So do I have a motion on Meadows property?
Seven. Second.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
I'm staying.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's 5-0 and 1 extension. Boundary line adjustment moving 176.374 acres from the unincorporated area of the county of Montgomery into incorporated town of Christiansburg. The proposed boundary adjustment area is currently known as Crossport Four Square Conference Center and town of Christiansburg Pump Station and is located on the southwestern boundary of the town of Christiansburg. That public hearing, adjacent to Route 8 and Interstate 81, that public hearing was held July 11th also.
I make a motion to accept.
Affirm?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Got a motion in the second, any discussions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Very good. Boundary line adjustment moving 26.043 acres from the unincorporated area of the county of Montgomery into the incorporated town of Christiansburg. Proposed boundary adjustment area includes property tax map numbers 95-5-1 and 94-5-2, and is located on the southern boundary of the town of Christiansburg, adjacent to Falling Branch Road and Interstate 81, northbound entrance ramp D and exit 118B. Public hearing was also held on June 11th.
One second.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Mr. Stone, you did vote out?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Boundary line adjustment moving .360 acres from the unincorporated area of the county of Montgomery into the incorporated town of Christiansburg. Proposed boundary adjustment area includes a portion of property tax map number 53018-7. It is located on the southern boundary of the town of Christiansburg, near the intersection of Curtis Drive and Giles Drive. Public hearing was also held on June 11th.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is 6-0, thank you. The last consideration of a request by Invest Squared and Captain D's for the town to accept 2.62 acre portion of property on North Franklin Street, portion of tax passes 496-18-1 and 2, parcel ID number is 004908 and 010043. That is the, the old G and H appliance property there, the Rooster Canoe property.
Right. And they're... A big, big hole in the roof?
Yeah, they're going, and they're going to, they want us to, would like for us to take that into town.
They would like us to basically accept the 2.62 acre portion, kind of a flag-shaped portion of the property. They plan on demolishing all the buildings on the property. That would include the existing single-family house where the approximate location of the restaurant would be, and also those buildings where the mini warehouses are located, the Canoe mini warehouses. So basically, we would take everything inside the red line, basically to the rear, and like I say, this kind of one flag-shaped piece going out to North Franklin Street. We do own the property at the rear of this. It backs up to our Public Works property.
What's the thought on this? Why do they want us to take?
Simply, they don't really have a use for it.
Okay. And what are we going to do to it?
There is a pond on it. They do not plan on using the pond for stormwater. They plan on doing, managing stormwater on site.
So there's no initial cost?
Other than maintenance, there really wouldn't be an additional cost. You know, I've talked to Jim about it, and we feel the maintenance would probably be minimal on it. A lot of it is considered wetlands, and you aren't required to mow wetlands. Probably 85 or 90% of the property is in the 100-year flood plain.
So based on their potential town, do we have that property?
We can't necessarily do much with it.
Yeah.
So I guess, I guess kind of the one, I guess there's kind of two schools of thought on that is if it's in private hands, you are allowed to build in the 100-year flood plain. You just have additional regulations to go by if you build in the 100-year flood plain. So like I say, probably 85% of that property is in the flood plain. If it's in the town's hands, then, you know, nobody's obviously going to build on it. Is it likely somebody would build in it in the 100-year flood plain? Probably not particularly likely. You'd either have to build out of flood plain materials or build up out of the flood plain, plus there's basically three permitting processes you have to go through to do that.
If they keep the property, they have to maintain it, keep it cut and everything like that?
Well, other than the wetlands areas, yes.
Taxes, pay taxes, correct?
Yes, they would. I would imagine that that, I guess, particular portion of the property wouldn't be assessed a lot, but...
I sort of, I sort of like the fact that it's adjacent to our property, and I'm a big fan of wildlife habitat, so that would, that would protect that as habitat area. Wetlands are our estuaries for, you know, all kinds of things. So, I mean, if the staff has no compelling reason why we shouldn't accept it, I think it, I think it sounds like a good idea to me. Protect wildlife habitat at the very least, that's what we'll do.
What sort of maintenance?
I guess occasional mowing, and that's probably more if we, to be honest, the area, the public works area, although that's wetlands at the rear, and we don't really mow that.
Right.
Can I ask a question about, I've been surprised that the for sale sign on that is still there. Have they given you an indication when they're going to move ahead?
Jerry Petzl's here, probably.
Oh, okay.
Invest Squared? I guess I'll let him answer that question.
Can, pardon me, can we get a motion, put it on the table? And then we'll answer the questions.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consideration of request by Invest Squared and Captain D's.
I'll second that.
Got a motion in the second, Mr. Hubbard? Got a question?
Oh, yes, I go by there periodically or daily, and I see the for signs sign is still there, and I was just wondering if you had made any additional plans about when you're going to maybe take your next step.
The reason the sign's still, first of all, I'm Jerry Petzl, I represent the investors in Pinkfort, Tennessee. And the sign's still there because we have a closing of the property, and this is the last step.
But it's under contract?
Yes, it's under contract. We expect to close within the next 60 days. There's a lot of moving parts on a project like this. This is one of the last moving parts, and in subdividing the property, if you accept a donation, we'll move forward with replating the site. We had to buy a five-acre site initially, had no use for the rear portion of, want donated to you in exchange for a donation letter to the developers acknowledging, accepting the donation, give you deed to the property.[1737.83] There will be a reservation of a drainage easement from the site onto the wetlands area in two, in two places and that will be all in the deed and, and the survey flats. And this is the last, the last step in terms of approvals. Uh, the engineering is ongoing, the surveying is ongoing, everything is, uh, moving forward and, uh, we ask that you accept, uh, this donation.
Well, if everything goes smoothly, we'll probably see something within the next sixty days?
Yes, you should be able to eat there by then.
You can get on the pond, catch your fish till they get it built, Steve. So we got a motion in a second. Did I answer questions?
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions? Thank you, Jerry. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
No.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is five, five one. Motion encouraged, thank you. Next is a resolution to approve fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty annual budget.
Uh, Mayor, before you, sir, I just would like to say that we wish you the best of luck on this and, and hope you have a success and, and the town will support you.
Like everybody's looking forward to bringing Captain D's to the table.
Steve will be your first customer.
Make me a bit stronger, come on.
I like white meat.
Okay. Let's move on. We have, we have a resolution to approve the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty annual budget. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion when you approve the budget.
I second that.
Got a motion in a second? Any discussion?
I do. I'd like to say just a few things about the budget. That this year was, we really pushed the department heads to lower their budgets and although I'm sure that we're not the most popular people in the room when that has to happen, um, I feel it does put us in a better financial situation. If a person looks outside the box and looks at everything that's going on, we are set for some sort of an economic downturn and when that happens, I feel that we're gonna be far more prepared by saving the money that we did this year. So we do have a bigger net stake to pull from when the need arises. So I'd like to thank the department heads for being patient with us and pushing them and, um, allowing us to try to make the best budget that we can. And it was a complete collective effort. And that's all I'd like to say.
And Marissa, I'd like to say that I appreciate that you drive the wagon here and doing things to, to do this and it's, somebody in the council needs to do it and you did it and I, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Resolution to approve the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget appropriation. What figure was that, Randy? Is it the budget?
Just basically to spend the money.
Spend the money. Well, there you go. We gotta pass this. Does anybody wanna move that we approved the budget appropriation?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion in a second. Comments, questions? Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aha.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is six oh. Thank you. And I would like to also echo what Mrs. Sachs had to say about the, the department heads and the fact that they were all the sharpening pencils. Sometimes, a couple of times, but they, but they did sharpen and, and I think every department contributed, so, uh, I think we had, was it three, three thousand and cents or something? Okay, would you take, we're taking out the, the big stuff.
If we look at everything, I, I think it was close to a million.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you. And, and I'd like to thank the Finance Committee and the council for working through this thing with us and certainly the department heads for all of your time and effort. Staff reports, town manager.
Planning Commissioner Mark Curtis has requested a leave of absence until September third, the September third meeting. He's in graduate school and has a class conflict and he would miss four scheduled meetings.
He missed four scheduled?
Yes. Basically, we have a provision in the bylaws that council can, we, we have an absence provision and if you miss four in a calendar year, you'd be eligible, you could be requested to leave. Planning Commission, although we have the provision for the request of leaving of absence and he's requesting leave of absence for...
His attendance has been good today?
Yes, it has.
Okay.
On second vote?
Yeah. Still, are you going on?
I think census is fine, but it has to be approved by council.
Thank you.
And thank him for requesting.
Yeah. It's not showtime. Anything else?
Yes, uh, we have been doing the home study, uh, home stay inspections, safety inspections, and they're only averaging about fifteen minutes. We were charging forty dollars plus a eighty cent state surcharge for those inspections and we don't necessarily feel we need to be doing that just for a fifteen minute inspection. Uh, so we are requesting that if we can eliminate that fee and refund any of the ones that we've charged.
That's the Airbnb?
Yes, basically. Home stay.
If we, would we be reimbursing any of the, of our...
We haven't yet, although we would do that if, if it's agreeable. Um, right now, we've received seven permits and we've done seven inspections. We have two pending.
Now, I think it's a great idea.
We can do it for, you know, fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
But aren't we supposed to be in regulation by July first?
Correct. Uh, like I say, there's only two inspections pending, so they, basically, they've looked at, looked at all the requests with exception of two.
So there's a lot of people who have not stepped up and done it.
I would say that's the case if we've only had eleven, eleven applications.
If I could just say a, a few things, is the penalty is extremely stiff, you know, so please get with the town and, and, you know, get your permits filed, especially now, there's no reason not to. But if someone is caught, it's an extremely harsh penalty, so please share that. But I would support waiving the, the fee and refunding those who have already paid.
I agree with that, especially for people, I didn't support the ordinance as it was written, but since it's in place, I certainly think we should, we should be encouraging and making it as easy for people to register for this because they're gonna be paying the, uh, the lodging fee, so I certainly agree to make it as just as easy as possible for people to get on the program. So, yeah, I agree with that. I think it's a wonderful suggestion. I'm not sure what the, where it emanated from, if it's your office or whatever, but I think it's a good...
It's building inspections. I think they anticipate the inspections taking a little longer.
Right.
Yeah, do we need a vote?
If you could. Since, since there's a fee we've been charging.
So do we, we have a motion to waive the fifteen dollar fee?
Seventeen dollars.
Forty dollar fee, I'm against.
I'll make the motion to waive.
Waive and refund.
Yes, correct.
I second that, yeah, that's a good idea.
Motion in a second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aha.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is six oh. Thank you and thanks for bringing that up, Randy. Anything else?
Just looking at alternative dates for the retreat, I know, I guess, the coming of weekend is out of the question, so just maybe suggest possibility of off Tuesdays if that works. I know Saturdays are a little bit of an issue, so, uh, noticed a couple of available dates with Kevin Byrd, uh, July thirtieth and August sixth, if we can't work out a Saturday. And, and that, that is a fifth Tuesday on the thirtieth and the first Tuesday on the sixth, so those both be, like I say, off council meetings. Although it is out as potential dates.
The thirtieth of July?
Yes.
Yeah, ten. That'd be that Tuesday, but any other two, yeah, if it's an off Tuesday, that's...
So do you have any Saturday, anything?
He does. The Saturdays that he had available for July twentieth and August third, or the two in July and August. July twentieth and August third.
The same, the same trip will be out of town on the thirtieth, I'll be out, it's a Saturday.
What about the twentieth?
Twentieth is fine.
Twentieth of July?
Twentieth is fine.
And do he have any limitations on?
He, he's limited in the morning on the twentieth, but available in the afternoon.
We need to start in the morning, have him come in with any... Is that good?
I think I understand.
Okay. So we're gonna, you're gonna go to the same spot, you're gonna...
We'll try to, yes.
Okay.
So we're looking at the, the Saturday, the twentieth, and do you want a Tu, a Tuesday shorter session also?
Can we decide towards the end of that meeting whether we need to do a, you know, follow up once we...
I think we do.
Compressed all the information?
Uh, what we're gonna have the meeting at?
Probably across the point. I'll just make sure they're available, I think.
Saturdays are last weekend.
So does this mean that this Saturday is out?
It does.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. We got it?
That's all I've got.
Mr. Hopper?
No report.
Any other staff to report? Thank you. Any council reports?
Yeah, I kinda like somebody to explain what all the activities will be for the holiday.
I'm giving them to you.
You're a good man.
Wait just a second.
Okay.
I just have two, we'll put the Pizza Inn and the, the road construction around that. I think that we are hoping to have it done in about the middle of May. Does anybody have an idea when, when the barriers are gonna come down around Pizza Inn?
We, can I speak? We are about to transition to the next project, which is the Stone Drain Project. At that point, North Franklin, along that stretch will be closed in both directions. However, we, we do plan to, uh, make accommodations for, uh, Pizza Inn and those businesses right down there near the intersection.
I mean, have you got a ballpark idea when, when it's gonna be closed both ways?
We're waiting to hear from the current contractor, hear what, we're, we're anticipating any day, but we're still waiting.
I mean, is your chances gonna be opened up a, a little bit before the, before the now?
Our, our plan was not to confuse everyone. Open it and then close it.
Will there be still nighttime activity?
No. This, this work, yes, this work will be...
Because I think Mrs. Hicks was concerned about that.
And we're staying in close contact with her.
Okay. Thank you.
Keep her abreast. The projects are extremely behind. When I checked with you in the spring, Mr. Bishop, Daniel Bishop, had written me and I wrote him back that I remember at that time, the first project was supposed to be wrapping up in April and the second project was in, in July. That's what I recall. And we have a letter... Way behind. Under, under review. I hope we're doing everything we can to get it at the heels because that's a, I mean, uh, Mr., last time I was in the restaurant, Mr. Harbuckle was, I mean, the, the people hurting, you know, that business particular is hurting and, um, yeah, so enough, yeah, I'm sure we're doing everything we can do, but I, I do, we are all, I think all at this table are all concerned about the impact, negative impact to our downtown area and the business.
We understand.
As part of the contract, they say they're gonna be through on a date and if it's not through by a date, or, or then do they have to, uh...
We, we can request liquidated damages, basically, and I think that's up to fifty thousand dollars.
Seven fifty a day.
Seven hundred and fifty a day, liquidated damages. We do have to show our damages though in order to claim this.
And it's almost impossible. It's, it's very hard to do.
At the very least, we could show, I guess, additional inspections and things like that.
Like the, Mr. Stewart at Pizza Inn, can he say this, uh, has, has caused me a reduction of such and such amount?
I know, but that's a claim he can make against these contractor.
Does he have a chance of getting any money out of it?
I, I couldn't, I couldn't speak to that.
I think liquidated damages are really for town expenses.
So what's this May a date of this being finished?
When the Stone Drain Project begins, they're estimating here from, anywhere from eight to twelve weeks.
When it starts?
When it starts. They'll be through the summer.
Well, thank you and I know you're working for us and, and you know that we're concerned and, uh, of course, the citizens of Christiansburg are concerned.
And we feel it.
Okay.
I have one other thing. I, I think that we were gonna talk about this at our meeting on this weekend, but since it's passed back, I'm not sure if anybody wants to talk about this or not, but I think Chris Tuck has talked to all of us, uh, concerning, um, the new sheriff's building and how anybody feels about it. And he asked me and I said, well, I would just like to ask other people in council how they felt about it and that maybe, I thought, maybe there's a, a, a chance that will be a consensus here for the entire council and maybe the mayor could then, uh, talk to Mr. Tuck and tell him how we feel about it. I'm not sure if anybody has any opinions on it or not.
My opinion is that this, our body has no decision making on this building.
Is there a problem?
Yes, for our personal...
We're all, we're all county citizens. You can go down and talk to the board of supervisors. I don't know, but not, the town doesn't own it?
I have some thoughts, but I think he was seeking out...
Yeah, personally.
Does that mean?
Well, yeah, the citizen may have your opinion, I guess, but not as a board.
Part of our thought, Mayor.
I have one. Okay. I have one comment. I'd like to publicly recognize, um, Councilwoman Sachs, uh, for this year's budget. She, I'll say this publicly, she did my job for me on this year. She dug in there and she really has been a fine council member, very thorough, and I wanna publicly recognize her ability, or her involvement and attention to detail and digging in on the budget this year and I wanna publicly recognize that to my fellow colleagues and also the, the town of Christiansburg, general public. You have a good steward up here with your resources and I appreciate the work and putting into this year's budget.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And I completely agree with that, completely. Great job.
Yes. Lots of pencils short. Those you drew. Okay, any other stay, have any other council reports? Mr. Bishop, you got any? Okay. In answer to Mr. Collins's question, what is going on for the Fourth of July? Uh, we're, obviously, the Fourth of July celebration is downtown from ten to four, I believe that.
Yes, sir, ten to four.
The, uh, Brad, you wanna, I think Hickok Street is going to be the children's play area with the bouncing doors. Everything else, all the other vendors are gonna be on Main Street?
Yes, sir. Uh, so we, uh, we will have vendors for the Fourth of July Festival in downtown. Uh, we plan to have, uh, three vans present, um, throughout the time. Um, we also will have the farmer's market, uh, vendors that will also be on Main Street, uh, so they'll all be blended together. Uh, should be a couple of food trucks there as well. Uh, the Hickok Street will be primarily used for, uh, children's activities, uh, so we'll have some different, different types of things with that. Um, should be a fun event. I think we have more vendors this year than we've ever had, um, so it's continuing to grow each year, which is what we want. Um, so looking very forward to that.